Well, good afternoon. It's officially afternoon now. I hereby reconvene the open session, board meeting. Trustee Cohen, who is serving today as secretary. Do we have a quorum?
All trustees are in attendance, and we have a quorum.
Thank you, trustee Cohen. First, we will begin today's meeting with one item of business. Copies of the minutes from our April 2, 2019, meeting of the GDC Board of Trustees has been distributed prior to this meeting for the board's review. And are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, the minutes will stand, approved as read. We now turn to the portion of the meeting which we have each time we convene, to Frank Saker, who is our interim executive director, and Steve Sigmund, our chief of public outreach, for an update on the Gateway—ah, here's Frank—for the update on the Gateway program. Thank you for joining us today, Frank.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, everyone, today. I think we'd like to give a bit of an update on the progress we've been making on the Gateway program since our last meeting. We will do a program update. Steve is going to provide some analysis on infrastructure failures and train delays in the Gateway territory, it's work that's been ongoing, and we'll describe briefly a resolution that is up for discussion today. So firstly, by way of update, you—so, in brief, we are continuing to prepare the projects for procurement. GDC and its project partners are continuing to take action, as much as we can, within our control, to advance the Gateway program. And it falls under several categories. In terms of program governance, something that I think will be mentioned during the day, but the—both legislatures in the state of New York and the state of New Jersey have passed the Gateway Development Commission Act to create a new and stronger Gateway Development Commission. That legislation's passed and is awaiting signing by each governor. In respect of Portal North Bridge, just briefly, New Jersey Transit, certainly in cooperation with ourselves and all of the project partners, is preparing an updated capital investment grant program application, which will be due by August 23rd. And there's a lot of work going in there to respond to some of the comments that FTA has made previously. In respect of the Hudson Tunnel project, there's a lot of ongoing work there on that project as well. We're continuing to progress our value-for-money analysis. What that means, preparing—you're continuing to develop our risk analysis, mitigation, allocation, work—the Gateway Trans-Hudson Partnership, our technical advisor, and Ernst &amp; Young are partners in that effort and are helping us to develop the best value-for-money solution in terms of the packaging of the contracts, in terms of the delivery methods that would apply to those contracts. We are also continuing to work on developing procurement material to make sure that we keep—as much as we can—keep on schedule and be prepared to commence procurement activities as soon as we've got a clarity on funding, and of course, as well, a record of decision on environmental matters. In respect of the grant submission for the tunnel, the Port Authority, in conjunction with ourselves and our other partners, are also working on preparing a grant application for the federal grant, 5309 grant, for the Hudson Tunnel project. And again, a subject to a deadline of August 23rd, so there's a lot of activity going on there at the moment. And with that, I'm going to take a breath and pass on to Steve and let him talk about the delay.
Thank you, Frank. Steve?
Thanks. Thank you, Frank, and thank you, trustees. As we all know, there are significant delays that are caused by the more-than-century-old infrastructure that we have at the Portal Bridge and the existing North River Tunnel. At your direction, we took a look, working with the Northeast Corridor Commission, at our railroads and what we called major infrastructure failures that caused very, very significant delays for passengers. So what we found was there were 85 major incident days in the five years at the Portal Bridge and Hudson Tunnel where there were more than five-plus-hours total delays caused by problems with the infrastructure. So when you break that down, every month, there is a day and a half, essentially, on average, where there's more than five hours of total delay on Amtrak and New Jersey Transit trains, and it added up between the Portal and North River Tunnel to almost 2,000 hours of lost time and productivity for passengers, which obviously is very significant, not just for their lives, but for the economic activity and potential of this region and this nation. A couple other major broad findings: On an average day, a little more than 10% of trains are delayed. On these major incident days, that doubles. That's almost 1 in 5 trains are delayed. It was an average of about 30 minutes per train in the tunnel. And the way that we did this analysis with the Northeast Corridor Commission was looking at Amtrak and New Jersey Transit trains, a very, very significant amount of data, 3 million train movements, and up and down the Northeast Corridor, focusing on 1.5 million movements in the Gateway territory, and we'll continue to look at this data as we move forward. Looking at the particular assets themselves, in the tunnel, there are multiple problems that cause these delays. The power problems that we've talked about in the past caused about 35%, or 1/3, of these delays, but other problems caused about 2/3, you know, almost double what the power problems cause, including the track conditions, like the ballast signal problem, sending wrong signals, other problems like ice, et cetera, which I'll talk about a little bit more. And in total, there were 65 major incidents in the tunnel that caused over 1,000 hours of delays. Interestingly, in the power problem, the traction power, which is something that we've talked about publicly, the power lines themselves were a more frequent cause, but the bigger impact of delays were the catenary wires, that are the overhead wires and the pantographs that go to the trains themselves, because they have to be cleared every time there's a problem. So the overall takeaway here is, very, very significant delays, obviously, but also that there are lots and lots of different kinds of problems within the 108-year-old North River Tube, and these are just some of them, that cause these major incident delays. Cable failures, obviously, is the power lines, ice buildup, corroded rails, salt that gets into the ballasted track, they're still using old ballasted track that's a very outdated technology, and sends false signals. When we get—you know, lots of us who ride New Jersey Transit get these signal problem updates, and that's almost always a false signal saying that there's a train delayed, and so that the other trains can't move, and you single-track, and in fact, there is not a train that is stuck in there, but that's because of this ballasted track. So there's a multitude of problems in this 108-year-old tunnel that need to be looked at. The Portal Bridge, we found 18 major incident delay days in those five years, causing 780 hours of delays. That was—the vast majority of those is this problem with closing the portal—the swing Portal Bridge after it's been open. We've talked about the fact that the person has had to come out with a hammer and hit it back into place at times, and that has happened. There are about five incidents where it was track fires. But also, another interesting finding, these were not major incident days, but on the normal days in those five years when the Portal Bridge opened and closed, there were 230 days affecting 1,000 trains where there were delays. So every time the Portal Bridge swings open, it causes at least a 20-minute delay, because it has to swing open and swing close. So even when it works, it causes enormous delays, which is why you all and our partners are working so hard to build a 21st-century-fixed bridge that doesn't swing open and close. So, look, the bottom line is, these delays wreak havoc. They wreak havoc on people's lives, they wreak havoc on the region's economy and on the nation's economy, and they erode trust, and it's why you all and our partners are working so hard to build Gateway and to create a 21st-century transportation system to replace these 108-year-old assets that obviously lead to enormous and significant problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Frank. You know, one of the things in this report, first of all, 85 delay days is a shocking number, but it's also—should be recalled that this is a very generous description of what a delay day is. It's a five-hour delay. If you are a commuter, a one-hour delay is intolerable. And if that were our standard, you know, I shudder to think what the total number of delay days would be. So this was a very lenient curve, and yet we still came up with 85 delay days. Unacceptable, and that says it all as to why this project needs to be built. Frank?
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, I have one more slide in terms of a potential board resolution for consideration. One of the things—to my earlier comments about continuing to progress the Hudson Tunnel project towards procurement, and so that we can be ready to jump as soon as we have clarity on funding and the record of decision, is endorsement—resolution to endorse the amendment to the engineering services contract with the Gateway Trans-Hudson Partnership, which is a partnership of WSP, ACOM, and STV, for the development of contract package procurement documents. In short, this is to continue to allow us to get ready for procurement. It will cover activities really up to procurement, so continued value-for-money analysis support, as I was describing earlier, helping with the contract packaging, the risk mitigation analysis, project engineering and technical support, preparing the project specs and the contributing to the design bill documents, and getting ourselves ready for that procurement. It will include preparing—contributing to preparation of RFQs and RFPs, and as I mentioned, the contracts itself. That contract's currently held by Amtrak on behalf of the project partners, and it will take the lead in facilitating the amendment to the existing contract with the Gateway Trans-Hudson Partnership. But as—in our role, making sure that we are contemplating everything that needs to be done for the Gateway project, we have a resolution to endorse that modification. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks, Frank. Thank you again, Steve, for your update. Any questions or comments from the board at this time? No? Next, we will go into the public comment period of today's meeting. Trustee Cohen.
Today, we have nine registered speakers. Speakers, in order to give everyone an opportunity to be heard, we request you limit your comments to three minutes or less. The first speaker is Senator Loretta Weinberg from the New Jersey State Senate. Welcome, Senator Weinberg.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, commissioners. I think I know each of you from your other lives, not as commissioners of the Gateway. But one month ago, after weeks of very, very difficult negotiations, the legislatures in New Jersey and New York passed legislation setting up the new Gateway Development Commission to oversee what is expected to be—and hopefully, we will live long enough—to see the largest mass transit project in our nation's history. The new bill, which was supported by my partner in New York, Assemblywoman Amy Pollan, for the first time would require, in legislation, New York and New Jersey to pay equally for the local share of construction of the Gateway tunnels and the new Portal Bridge. At Assemblywoman Pollan's insistence and with my full support, it defines Gateway broadly to include the Phase 2 construction of New York Penn Station South and other projects needed to expand New Jersey Transit rail capacity to Manhattan. It establishes requirements for open public meetings, open public records, it establishes conflict of interest standards and whistleblower protections, and sets public hearing requirements. It gives the New York and New Jersey governors the same power to veto minutes of the new commission that they currently have over the Port Authority and other state and by-state agencies, so that they will share responsibility for the commission's actions. And most important, it requires New York and New Jersey each to pay 50% of the local share for tunnels and sharply limits the ability of the commission to impose user fees, meaning tolls, on New Jersey Transit and Amtrak trains to pay for construction of the new tunnels or other aspects of the project. We intentionally wrote the new $16 billion New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund law in 2016 with no cap on annual borrowing in case we need an extra $1 billion or more in any year—in any given year—for the Gateway project. Construction of the Gateway project is an economic and quality-of-life imperative to the eastern region of the United States. I want to make it absolutely clear today that it is the bipartisan intent of the New Jersey legislative leadership that, under no circumstances, would we accept a scenario under which NJ Transit's operating budget, which continues to be underfunded, would be saddled with any portion of the construction of Gateway. Commitment to that principle will be a prerequisite for confirmation for any new nominee to the Gateway Development Commission. Now, I know that this bill is—in both states—awaiting the signature of both governors. And I hope—I know that you are all familiar with the requirements of the new bill, and I hope while we wait for it to move to full implementation, that you will be guided by the principles that we have set forth in this legislation. I appreciate the time that Mr. Zarro spent with me in my office to bring me up to date on the important work that each of you are doing here today. And I want to thank Mr. Sigmund for the really terrific statistical analysis he did. Anyone just has to look at my Twitter feed on a daily basis, or Facebook posts, to know what those hours translate into in quality of life to the 900,000 New Jersey residents that each and every day try to take public transportation to get to their work or recreation. So I know you're all aware of how important this work is, and you will have the full cooperation of anything that my office can do to further it. Commissioner Cohen, were you just elevated to secretary? Did I just hear that?
Because of an absence of our counsel, I have been asked to serve in this function, and I hope that I am living up to the standard of the office, which I intend to resign from the minute this meeting is over.
Because I was going to offer you my congratulations on the new job.
I'll take them for anything, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me also say, Senator—by the way, Senator Weinberg is my hometown senator, and we had a little walk down memory lane the other day, which was great, but the senator has truly been the leading light and proponent of this legislation on the New Jersey side of the river, and there is no more zealous advocate of the commuting public, and particularly those in New Jersey, than Senator Weinberg, and we thank you for your efforts in this endeavor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Bill Neary from Keep Middlesex Moving.
I appreciate the time limit. I always believe in the three Bs of public speaking: Be brief, be bright, and be gone. So, my name is Bill Neary. I'm the executive director of Keep Middlesex Moving, through the Transportation Management Association of Middlesex County. I'm also the chairman of the Central Jersey Transportation Forum, which is a collaborative effort that goes on throughout Mercer, Middlesex, and Somerset Counties. And I'm a former mayor of East Brunswick Township. I'm just here to present a resolution that was passed by the forum, talk about how this important this project is for not New Jersey and not just New York, but central New Jersey especially, economically, transit-oriented developments, everything that's occurring in New Jersey. This project is necessary for our survival as a state of New Jersey. So rather than give you all the whereas, I'd like to put in the public record the resolution that was passed, and thank you for your support and continue to do the good work that I think is really important for all of us in the future. Thank you.
I will mark that as Exhibit A and move it into evidence. Joseph Clift?
You have my prepared remarks?
I believe we do.
Okay. You'll take a look at them, please. I want to incorporate the comments Mr. Sigmund made in my comments today. I feel very alone here, because everyone else is saying, "Build this, build this, build this." There's not enough money, $17 billion, to not get a single additional train in the peak hour, which is what's needed by everyone, I think, is just a non-starter. Let me talk about my three issues. First, I thought you all had delayed the meeting twice because you were waiting for the Columbia and Cornell Deans to give you a report on cable racking, but I don't see it today. The original report for the L train took a month. You've had almost four times that, 16 weeks, and I wonder where that report is. The L train racking is going well. They're starting—they've taken out most of the walls they need to take out. They're now putting in cables. This would advance the repairs to the tunnels from sandy damage by 10 years. If this is a critical problem, then it needs to be advanced. And you cannot ask your regular advisors, they benefit from bigger projects. You have to go to an independent authority, which is what Governor Cuomo did six months ago. But I just say, you've got to get that report out, because I believe it's going to tell you there are great benefits in doing that. By the way, in my package today, I have a copy of the editorial from the Daily News today that talks about some of these issues. But with Portal, the traction power problems that were mentioned, the catenary, if you rack the cables on the walls, the traction power problem is gone. You don't have those 100-year-old bench walls to deal with. Cable racking solves that problem. Portal Bridge, I gave you a year ago the evidence that says the project does not qualify for an $800 million core capacity grant from the federal government, because you don't increase seats into Penn Station in the peak hour by at least 10%. New Jersey Transit has already changed those trains. You put another application in, it's not going to go anywhere. You need to go to a low-level bridge. There's a boat round trip every six weeks that's documented from Amtrak, Bridgetender files from 2017 to 2018, and Mr. Sigmund's comments about delays, starting back in 2014, there's no—there were no sludge barges at the end of 2016. Other things happened in there, and now you've got the five-hour restrictions in the morning and the evening, that basically, the bridge can't open. You need to look at current information. If you're claiming history for what you want to spend today, that's a bad move. And last, I want to thank Senator Weinberg. She talked about the issue that I raised here, but you've just changed from New Jersey Transit spending operating fare box money under the current plan to spending capital money, which is where it belongs. I totally agree with that. So you've got the Hudson Tunnel project now, the financial plan is dead until that $1.5 billion can be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Christopher Boylan, from the General Contractors Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I hadn't intended to speak here today, but given some of the things I've seen in writing and elsewhere over the last couple of days, I thought certain basics about the global project should be repeated and reemphasized to remind people why the project itself exists, even though they should go without saying. Certainly, the project's about rehabilitating the existing Hudson River tunnels, and one can argue all the different engineering approaches you should take, and I'm sure you will look at all of those. But leaving that aside, the new tunnels are needed, they're essential for redundancy in capacity in a region that has grown far beyond what the original capacity of those tunnels were intended to carry. The four tunnels that the MTA uses and the Amtrak and Jersey Transit uses under the East River leave commuting tenuous at best. Adding two more to Grand Central will certainly help that, but to leave the Hudson capacity at half, or soon to be 1/3 of that, when all the development—you can look at the numbers generated by city planning and regional planners about where the economic growth has been in the region, and it's been west of the Hudson, maybe commuting into New York. It's just unconscionable not to deal with that. Also, in today's news—Daily News, the Port Authority chairman and executive director pointed out a number of the visible progress improvements that have been made in terms of the bridges and the airports in the region to deal with the growing economy. Let me suggest that Gateway is no less essential than those pieces to the economy. Fundamental, all you have to do is go roll the page back to 9/11, when the only show in town between New York and Washington was Amtrak, and you know how essential those issues are. We need to put the fundamental reasons for Gateway behind us. We've been into this for a long time, and we need to leave those arguments behind. This project is a no-brainer, and we continue to applaud your commitment for advancing this project, especially in the way you've done it in a collaborative fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is David Allen from Railway Age.
I am David Peter Allen, and I live and practice law in South Orange. Many of you know me as the chair of the Lackawanna Coalition, a New Jersey-oriented rider advocacy organization. I am not appearing for them today. Instead, I am here as a journalist, in my capacity as a contributing editor at Railway Age. I have just completed a six-part series entitled Gateway: The Series, about several aspects of the Gateway program. These articles appear on the Railway Age website, www.railwayage.com. As far as I know, this series constitutes the deepest examination of the Gateway program to date. Those of you who are here have just observed me furnishing each Gateway trustee with a list of these articles and links to indicate where they can be found, and I have also furnished the full printouts to the secretary. I request that those articles be considered exhibits and included in the record of today's proceedings. My editor, William C. Ventuono, knows why I am here today, and he knows what I am saying. I express my deep appreciation to him for running these articles. Railway Age has a long and proud history of promoting innovation and wise leadership in the railroad industry. While this board and other Gateway proponents would have you believe that the entire Gateway program as proposed is inevitable, that is far from the truth. In fact, Gateway and many of its projects are controversial. Some media outlets and members of the rider advocacy community support it as proposed, while others do not. As I have learned from my research, it is not at all clear that there could ever be enough money to build all of Gateway enough money to build all of Gateway as currently proposed, or that it would constitute wise transportation policy to do so, even if there were enough money to build it all. I believe that the reporting that I submit today constitutes a meaningful contribution to the free marketplace of ideas that John Stuart Mill first espoused in On Liberty in 1859, three years after Railway Age was founded. In this series, we have explored the history of Gateway's predecessor, the Ark Project, the scope and cost of Gateway as currently proposed, the Hudson Tunnel Project, the Portal North Bridge Project, the proposed Penn South Station, and we have concluded this series with an examination of alternatives to the Gateway proposal that would solve our transportation problems while saving billions of dollars that could be used more cost-effectively elsewhere. We have not neglected the views of Gateway proponents either, including, most recently, those expressed by Attorney Zarro less than three weeks ago. I urge all of you to go to the Railway Age website, www.railwayage.com, and keep informed with our in-depth coverage of the Gateway Program as events unfold. There will be more.
Is Brian Fritsch from Build Gateway Now?
Thank you very much. Build Gateway Now is a coalition of over 45 civic, environmental, transportation, labor, and business organizations that support the Gateway Project. I'm here today to briefly touch on a survey that we had administered online to ask commuters to share with us their horror stories of commuting through Gateway territory. And Steve mentioned earlier, you know, havoc, frustration, and eroded trust, and those are all very palpable in the almost 200 submissions that I received. For example, Mark from Westfield, New Jersey commented that being late forced him to miss a pitch that literally cost him financial and career progression. James from Fanwood talked about missed meetings, missed time with family, and missed opportunities for all commuters in the state. Additionally, Laura from Montclair estimates that delays cost her conservatively 65 hours per year in time with her family and friends. Ian from Levittown, Pennsylvania mentioned a four-hour delay at the Portal Bridge that he was, had to endure, while Mark from Hackensack talked about being forced to ride in the vestibule of his New Jersey Transit train, which he considered to be very dangerous and disappointing. I could go on and on. There is a lot of content there. Not all of it is particularly shareable, but it's very colorful. Yes, absolutely. So thank you for that opportunity to share some of the frustration of commuters in the Gateway area.
Thank you. Next is Tony Perry, Commerce and Industry Association of New York.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Tony Perry, on behalf of the Commerce and Industry Association of New Jersey, we represent about 900 members from virtually every business sector from across the state of New Jersey: hospitality, manufacturing, financial, insurance, academia, et cetera. First, our organization was in full support of Senator Weinberg's legislation, bipartisan legislation, and I've watched from a variety of capacities her and former Senator Bob Gordon and Senator Kaine work on legislation. So it's always very nice to watch a bipartisan coalition work to advance that. So thank you, Senator Weinberg. Our organization, actually, before I speak on behalf of our organization, despite being one of the most hated generations as a millennial, I just wanted to state that, you know, time after time, and as I'm sure Mark and Senator Weinberg and many of you can attest, we continually see, report after report, whether it's Wallet Hub or what have you, different organizations state that millennials are leaving the state of New Jersey. And that is, I think, in part, at least slightly, to blame, that many of them don't want to live in the state of New Jersey, and they get job offers after they leave college and move to New York City to avoid the hassles, maybe their parents, but also to avoid the hassles of public transportation. And I think that many of, we could see a reversal in that trend if we had a state-of-the-art Gateway Tunnel that we're all in favor of here today. But our organization has strongly supported the construction of this project since the beginning. As we all know, the rail tunnel between New Jersey and New York Penn Station represents the busiest rail hub in the western hemisphere. And nationally, there's no area of the country more dependent on mass transportation than the North Jersey-New York region, with commuters taking more than the 4.3 billion unlinked trips. And just for comparison, for those that don't know, Los Angeles, which is the second highest, represents only 1/7th of that number in the same given year. So as the clock is ticking on the tunnel's resiliency, which estimates it to be, I think, within 10 years of needing drastic renovations, our organization and the people of New Jersey need this tunnel. It's an unquestionable need. The tunnel project is estimated to generate $9 billion in economic activity and create hundreds of thousands of skilled jobs. And we are of the firmest belief that the Gateway Tunnel is the single most important infrastructure project in this country. So our organization stands in full support of that. So thank you very much.
Bruce Bergen from the Raritan Valley Rail Coalition.
Mr. Chairman, it's nice to see you again, board members. My name is Bruce Bergen, and I am the chairman of the Raritan Valley Rail Coalition. I speak to you today on behalf of our four-member counties, 28-member municipalities, in excess of 23,500 daily riders, and more than 1 million residents along the Raritan Valley Rail of New Jersey Transit. Although our organization is primarily an advocate for improvements to the Raritan Valley Line, the long-term health and growth of our line, along with all of New Jersey Transit, is threatened by the condition of the existing Hudson River tunnels and related structures. If you look at the transit-oriented development along the Raritan Line alone, in towns like Cranford, Garwood, Westfield, Plainfield, and Bound Brook, just to mention a few, the need for expansion of rail service is absolutely clear, even more so protecting against cuts. We cannot afford to continue to gamble our future by failing to promptly proceed with the Gateway Project. As documented in the February 2019 report by the Regional Plan Association called "The Preventable Crisis," failure of just one tunnel would lead to a catastrophe, both financial and personal, not only for New Jersey Transit riders, but for all of us living in this area and in the entire northeast region, and I would suggest in the entire country. In that regard, as I'm sure you are aware, Congressman Tom Malinowski, who represents a large portion of the Raritan Valley Line service area, earlier this year hosted the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, of which he is a member, in touring the Hudson River Tunnel and the Portal Bridge, and in holding a roundtable and committee hearing at the Port Authority Office in Manhattan. I would note that Congressman Malinowski and the entire New Jersey delegation continue to introduce and support legislation to move this project ahead and to press the current administration to take appropriate action to do so. After that meeting, writing in Cranes, New York, committee chairman Congressman Peter DeFazio of Oregon said, quote, "Gateway is precisely the kind of project for which Congress can and should provide federal support," close quote. In closing his article, he said, quote, "It's time to put politics aside, start digging, and pay it forward for the next generation by building crucial projects such as the Gateway Tunnels and Portal Bridge," close quote. I could not agree with him more. That is why our organization has joined with so many others in advocating for the immediate commencement of the Gateway Project, and in particular promptly beginning the Portal Bridge Project, both through our membership in the Build Gateway Now Coalition, and I would note two of those comments were from riders from our line, and through making our voices heard at the state and federal level. Thank you for your time today, and we look forward to seeing ongoing progress to quickly move this critical project ahead.
Thank you. The next and final speaker is Kimberly O'Keefe from the previously mentioned Regional Planning Association.
Thank you and good afternoon. As mentioned, I'm Kimberly O'Keefe with the Regional Plan Association, a nonprofit urban policy and planning organization serving New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. I am pleased to testify today in support of the recently passed by-state legislation known as the Gateway Development Commission Act. RPA has long believed that every mega project like Gateway must have a guiding organization with a focused mission of delivering on a stated project. That includes conducting the project through its accompanying bureaucracies with a singular focus, which is essential to deliver the project on time and on budget. This commission must be able to give construction professionals the authority and accountability they need to control budgets, avoiding pitfalls that often plague infrastructure projects of this size. We believe the Gateway Development Commission Act will ensure these important goals can be accomplished. I especially like to thank New York Senate Majority Leader Loretta Weinberg and New York Assemblywoman Amy Pollan for ensuring that the legislation passed before the end of the session this year. Completing this legislation was a crucial step in moving Gateway forward. We know what the cascading economic effects of a partial tunnel closure or another failure in different sections of the northeast corridor would mean. As the only major rail link between New York and New Jersey, Gateway serves 200,000 passengers and 450 trains daily and links 20% of the nation's economy. Every day of delay adds $1.2 million to the project's overall cost. Additionally, the many negative health, safety, traffic, and environmental consequences that will also snowball as a result of failure to act now are considerable. We cannot afford to delay. As a representative of Regional Plan Association, I thank you all very much for the opportunity for my testimony today. Thanks.
That completes the speakers' portion of our meeting. I now return the program to Chairman Zarro.
Thank you, and with the job you're doing, you may not be able to give up the reins of this position. We're very grateful. The first action item before the board today is the endorsement of an amendment to Amtrak's Engineering Services Contract for the development of contract package procurement documents. All of this material has been distributed to the trustees previously. Do any trustees wish to make comment? Hearing none, I make a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Trustee Cohen for the roll call, please.
Yes, Chairman Zarro.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kosha.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The motion passes.
Thank you. I also note for the record that the board approved a matter today in executive session, which shall not be made available for public inspection at this time until such actions have been completed, and that is because these involve continuing negotiations that might, if public at this time, compromise the bargaining position of the GDC. So we, now, do we, no vote? Okay. So with that, thank you, Trustee Cohen. We, as is customary at the conclusion of meetings, will make ourselves available in the front of the boardroom to the media for any questions. I ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your participation and attendance.